16, 2020, regular meeting of council to order. Councilperson Blake will give the invocation this evening. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landig?
Here.
Mr. Mark?
Here.
Good evening. I want to welcome the public to the City Council virtual public meeting. If you are attending through the published WebEx link, you will notice a window open on the bottom right-hand side of the screen entitled Q and A. This window will have opened five minutes prior to the start of the meeting and will remain open for 10 minutes after the meeting begins for a total of 15 minutes. During that time, if you wish to address council at a later point in this meeting, please type your name, address, and the topic you wish to speak about. This is the only means for you to schedule your participation since the public cannot physically attend in person at this time. At the appropriate time during the meeting, I will recognize you and you will be unmuted. You will be permitted to make comments to council on the topic you requested to speak about. If the topic is tonight's public hearing, please also type whether you are speaking for or against the topic in order to be recognized in the proper order. If you wish to comment on an item on the agenda, you will be recognized when that item appears on the agenda. All other comments unrelated to the agenda will be heard near the end of the meeting during the persons before council portion of the agenda. Please make your speaking request at this time, and thank you for your virtual participation. Approval of minutes. Council, you receive the minutes of the regular meeting of June 2, 2020.
To approve.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law. Ordinance number 20-0-049.
Ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by the rezoning pursuant to development plan of permanent parcel 16D 107000005 and 019 located at Mallard Court from R4 Single Family Residential District to RVG Village Green District.
Mr. Philippiac, please provide a description of the request and proposed project.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the Glenbrook Estates subdivision proposal and Ms...
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 14.5 acres from the R4 Single Family Residential District to RVG Village Green. The subject property is surrounded by single-family RVG development to the north and west, a duplex condominium RVG development to the south, and State Route 2 to the east. The original development plan submitted for planning commission review on March 26 of this year included 35 single-family homes. The plan included a total of 9.97 acres of open space located on two private streets which had sidewalks on only one side. At the April 16 meeting, the developer reduced the number of housing units to 33 located on two now public streets and included sidewalks on both sides of the street. The open space acreage had been reduced to 4.76 acres to accommodate the public street and sidewalk additions. After further discussion, the applicant revised the proposal again for the May 7, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, which reduced the total number of units to 32 and increased the amount of open space back up to 5.59 acres, which was a 6% increase from the previous plan. The revised plan eliminated Unit 13 that at the time was adjacent to State Route 2 in the northeast corner of the property. Planning Commission requested a couple more housing units be removed from the May 7 proposal. They also could not reach consensus on whether the open space proposed south of Heasley Creek should have access and where the mail kiosk should be relocated to as requested by the engineering department without losing a couple more units. At that meeting, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the proposed rezoning by a 0-7 vote.
Any further comments from the administration?
Nothing further.
I note that the applicant is on the WebEx link or is representative, and he may have comments he would like to share at this time, so I would request that David Novak be unmuted.
Are you there, Mr. Novak? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Novak from Barrington Consulting Group. My address is 9114 Tyler Boulevard, Mentor, Ohio. A few things that I'd like to point out, as when we went through the Planning Commission, a lot of the residents had concerns about existing utility capacity as far as the water, the sanitary, and the electric. And we obtained letters from all of those agencies indicating that there was sufficient capacity within the existing infrastructure to support this development. Another one of the big contentions with this project was the fact that the trees that we are going to cut down, this property is currently zoned R4, which if it was developed as an R4 development, the amount of trees or woods or whatever that would be required to preserve was only 11%. And we're actually going to preserve 28% of the development. Furthermore, I think, it's always been my belief anyways, that this development is, should be RVG because you don't want to have spot zoning. And what you currently have is you do have spot zoning by this piece being an R4. As was mentioned by Kathy Mitchell, the property to the north is RVG, the property to the west is RVG, and the property to the east or on a diagonal, the easterly property line, is currently a freeway. So again, I think that this makes a lot of sense to be an RVG development. Again, going through the Planning Commission, some of, you know, as Kathy mentioned, and again, I talked with some of the council people, and they all indicated that if we lost two more units, that the potential for this to be approved would be greater. I question why the two units, again, because if you look at another project that was currently approved by Planning Commission, and I believe might even be on the agenda this evening, called Cardinal Meadows. And that particular property has family residential and B1 community service. It has R2 around it on three of the other sides. So again, it's not consistent with the adjacent zoning. This project is consistent with the adjacent zoning. Their proposed development or density is 2.5 units per acre, which is allowed by the code. We've reduced ours to 2.2 units per acre. So again, this is better than the Cardinal Meadows. When it comes to open space, again, you're allowed to have, the requirement is 15%. The proposed open space for Cardinal Meadows is almost 26%. Our project, we have 38%. So again, I think that that says we're better than the development that's being, that has already been approved by the Planning Commission as an RVG. One other thing that I would like to comment on is that, you know, in today's paper, News Herald, there was an article regarding this Mallard Court rezoning move to council. And it states in the article, it says, "The council legislation reads, 'Upon the consideration of recommendations made by the municipal planning commission and administration staff reports and public comments presented and having been given the matter its independent consideration, council finds that in the public interest health and welfare of the consistent with good zoning practice.'" And I want to emphasize that, that this is good zoning practice because, again, it's surrounded by RVG. So this is good zoning practice. And again, it continues on and so forth, but I just, this project just to me seems that it should be zoned RVG because of the surrounding properties, the development that we have. We've made concessions going from 36 units down to 33 or 32. We've more than doubled the required open space that's required by the code. So again, I implore the council to really take an independent look at this project and see how it does fit. It is in harmony with the surrounding areas. That's all I have unless somebody would have a question.
At this time, we will move to those that would speak in favor of this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? And I see none present. Next, we will move to anyone wishing to speak against this item, and I would just state that council is in receipt of a plethora of emails, correspondence. Many of us have viewed the several Planning Commission meetings and heard residents speak. So that if you are speaking, I would ask that, and you still want to speak, that we not cover the same ground during your time. You are limited to four minutes. I would like you to state your name and address for the record when you make your comments. This time, I'd like to unmute Dawn Krieger, who wishes to speak against the proposition proposal. Are you there, Mrs. Krieger?
Yes, I am. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council for taking the time to listen to the residents' concerns.
Yeah, please state your name and address again.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Record.
Yeah, John Krueger, 5833 Mallard Court. So again, I just wanted to thank everybody for listening to our concerns tonight. I know that you have received a lot of feedback from the residents for the last five months. And really, with the exception of the global pandemic and now having these meetings via WebEx, not much has changed since the initial proposal in February. Even to this meeting, you know, they haven't reduced any homes, which that seemed to be really one of the largest concerns. So I'm not going to reiterate all the things that, you know, we have said over and over again continuously, but, you know, Mr. Novak brings up spot zoning and that this property is rounded by the RVG Village Green. Well, he is correct. There are two areas, you know, there are two specific developments that are RVG, but neither one of those are accessible through Sausalito East. All of the communities that are accessible to Sausalito East or that Sausalito connects to would be Birdie Lane, which is zoned R4, and then you have, you know, directly north, Lori Place and whatnot, as well as Trillium. Those are actually zoned R3 and R5, so they actually expand the lot sizes even beyond, you know, the typical R4. And the RVG, as we've mentioned, you know, the RVG of Sausalito is not the RVG that is being proposed here. A less than 3,000 square foot building envelope does not equate to an 11,000 square foot, you know, yard, which is... He also mentions Cardinal Meadows. Cardinal Meadows is surrounded by RVG, but it is accessible from Lake Shore Boulevard. This development, all of the new developments in Mentor that have been changed to RVG are accessible from a main road, Lake Shore Boulevard, Johnny K., Jackson Street. You would have to drive down three quiet side streets to get to this development. And even the ones he's talking about that are, you know, RVG with Arden and Woodland Glen Glen, they are off the Hendrick. I think that, you know, when we talk about this, it's just, this property is riddled with too many challenges to squeeze 32 homes in. When you have the wetland of Heasley Creek, he talks about the space that he's allotting and the trees that he's allowing to stay on the property, but if you look at the, if you look at this land, it's part of a retention area, and it's Heasley Creek and wetland that shouldn't be built on anyway, and it really is going to only offer eight to nine actual buildable acres, which would be a little bit more comparable to Cardinal Meadows that's only building 20 homes in Cardinal Meadows. We just ask, we thank you for your thoughtfulness or consideration, and we just ask the City Council, our City Councils representing the 200-plus residents that are directly impacted by this zoning change, to, you know, be very considerate in making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize and unmute Tom Urbach in speaking in opposition to this item.
Good evening. My name is Tom Urbach, and I live at 5871 Mallard Court. I have lived at the corner of Dove Lane and Mallard Court for the past 34 years. As I said in my email, I hope that all of you had a chance to drive through Sausalito, especially Mallard Court, and up Birdie Lane to get a sense of what our neighborhood is like, and then think about what it might be, what Glenbrook Estates might look like, and the great, and the great, great differences. I'd like to take a couple exceptions to what Mr. Novak said. Dawn very eloquently discussed the spot zoning. The only thing I would bring up is that with Sausalito, instead of 2.3 units per acre as proposed at the, I believe, the April 16, or what is posted, what is on the screen right now, instead of 2.3 units per acre, Sausalito is actually, actually has 1.7 houses per acre. There are 78.65 acres and 136, do the math, it comes out to 1.7. We have a lot of green space. I have 47 feet behind my house all along, and that same 47 feet continues up and down Mallard Court. That's just a small part of the, what we call the commons area. Mr. Novak talks about spot zoning. He is correct. This was zoned and allowed to go through at 2.3 units per acre. This would be a high-density spot amid a great deal of low-density, Sausalito and Birdie Lane. Birdie Lane is, density is 1.5 houses per acre, lower than Sausalito. The difference shows up in, the density is manifest by long, narrow houses with garage-centric elevations as opposed to those in Sausalito, ranch-style, split levels, and California-style four-bedroom colonies like my house. It's a difference between 20-foot setbacks and 50- and 60-foot setbacks. It's a difference between two-car garages that make up half the front elevation and three-car garages that make up less than half the elevation, or are not part of the front elevation at all because they're on the side of the house. The density shows up with no tree lawns in Glenbrook and tree lawns with trees in Sausalito. In my particular situation, I have four mature poplar trees in my front yard, and they are older than the house. Those four trees are within 10 feet of the foundation, and they're still there. They were there when the house was built, and they're still there. There are several other houses in Sausalito with that. What is proposed, there won't be any trees where it doesn't show trees on their map, and if they do, R4, clear cut. I have seen some of Victor's, Victor Construction's developments, and before they started building, the entire area was clear cut. Finally, I'd like to say that because I am, I am right next to what would be the extension of Dove Lane, I have stood in the middle of that lot and tried to imagine what I would see if this development went through, if I looked east toward, east from Mallard toward Route 2. And I'm afraid what I would see, it's hard to say, but what I see in my mind's eye is Levitan or Levitown, made famous in the 50s in New York, and other developments from the 50s. Small houses, close together, packed up tight. And that's what you'd see from, you know, if you look to your right and left, you would see trees, front, back, tree lawns, large setbacks. It's just, it is a, it is spot zoning of the worst kind. This is a, this is a high-density spot among two beautiful neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Having no other speakers on this item, I would state again that council is in receipt of all correspondence and emails received pertaining to this matter. Excuse me? There is one more. Okay, can I have a name, please? Jeff Savage? Mr. Savage, you're being unmuted. Please state your name and address and whether you're speaking for or against this item.
Okay, my name is Jeff Savage, 5879 Mallard Court, and I'm against it. And Dawn and Tom have eloquently said everything, but I was going to say, but I will say this, that it's right in my backyard, as is in Tom's backyard, as is in Dawn's backyard. These are directly in our backyards. It's a beautiful area. I've lived in Mentor for, gosh, 44 years, two years in this house. I bought it, and I knew that the property might be rezoned, because it's always been that possibility, but I always thought that it would always be simple family housing because it's the best fit for the neighborhood. And as Tom said, I hope you folks had a chance, at least some of you had a chance to come down through here and see how everything is just laid out. All you got to do is just drive through and see, everything's just nicely set up, nice setbacks, beautiful spacing, beautiful homes. I don't understand why you'd want to shoehorn in 32 condo-type housing inside a development where you have to go through these two, three streets to get into it. And it kind of reminds me of a trailer park situation, which personally, if I was going to be building houses and you're going to be facing Route 2, that wouldn't be very appealing to me, and pretty soon, we're all going to be seeing Route 2 looking out our back windows. I don't care, but what I'm seeing is going to be a lot of trees saved. So I am against this, and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And I will state again, I see no one else in the queue. Is that correct? In that case, this public hearing is adjourned. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 20-0-049.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by the rezoning pursuant to development plan of permanent parcels 16D 10700005 and 019 located at Mallard Court from R4 Single Family Residential District to RVG Village Green District.
Council, discussion.
Who to suspend?
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Kirchner?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Who to approve?
Second. Please call the roll.
Blake?
No.
Donovan?
No.
Dowling?
No.
Kirchner?
No.
Krieger?
Let me make a couple comments first before I vote on that, and I want to thank all the residents of Sausalito for their comments and input. One of the things that we did not achieve through the planning process, which is part of RVG, is an approved planning development, and we did not get a developed approved plan. I think a lot of it had to do with the density in regards to the current neighborhood. So having said that, I'm going to vote no also.
Landig?
I think the law director would like to make a comment.
Not until the roll, once the roll is completed. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Then my vote is no.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I believe Mr. Krieger already did it to some extent, but if the council is prepared to enter any findings for the benefit of the record tonight, it could potentially delay findings until your following meeting, but to the extent the members who voted against this would express the factors which played into that negative vote, that would be very beneficial to have that record made. Thank you, Mr. President.
I can start. The density is not characteristic with the neighborhood. I don't know. Any other comments from council?
I forgot one comment I wanted to make clear because there might be a confusion on the name here. Dawn Krueger is not a relative of mine, and nor have we ever met. I want to make that clear because it just dawned on me. That may be a concern.
No pun intended.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Mrs. Dowling?
Was John done? Okay. Just one comment. I agree with what you said about the density, President. And I also, when you look at the overhead plan, I mean, you just, it looks shoehorned. I mean, we have a long stretch of road that is a one-sided road. That is not something typical, you know, where there are houses on both sides abutting to the freeway. It just does not seem...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirchner?
I have a couple comments first. I think the last couple years, the RVG zoning has gotten mixed reviews and maybe not always sending the right message to the developer and also to the residents. I think the time has come for us to take RVG zoning off the books. We already have a better product that's on the books. It requires a referendum, but it's a better product. We approved it. I think the fact that we're upping a lawsuit already, potentially more lawsuits, win, lose, or draw, it's an expensive cost to the taxpayers. We've got not a lot, not a lot of property left that's really good, good for property for development. A lot of them are problematic, such as this one, and I think it's just time that we went back and got into our property, got into the planned recreational development zoning that we've got on the books. I think it's just run its course, and it's time to remove the RVG zoning from our code. As far as this development, my input would be that the... As far as just development, my, my input would be the, the character issue, the character of the existing neighborhood being a, being a problem, the traffic issue with the one access in, the inability for the developer to remove a few more lots, which I understand would be, could be a problem with the development end of it, but could be made up on the, the building end of it. But again, going forward, I hope council considers removing this zoning from the code. Thank you.
Our VG request is so noted.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marn?
I echo Mr. Kirchner's comments 100%. You know, we spent a number of years redefining our ordinances. We hired Kathy Mitchell to help us come in, redefine our ordinances. And RVG is initially designed back 40, 50 years ago for small, or at the barriers such as this. Sometimes we feel that we get the true meaning and the true flow of RVG and sometimes we don't. Then it comes down to, well, we feel that the flow or do we go with the codes in the ordinances that we have in place? It doesn't meet those cores in the ordinances. So it's always a difficult point, but it comes down to those two things. If we just do away with it all together and utilize what we have, then it's not a subject. Administration, it's a cut and dry planning commission. So we don't have to deal with that situation anymore. And then when it comes up with us, we don't have to have the feelings take place and then utilize the feelings of our codes and our ordinances. So I agree with Mr. Kirchner 110%.
Any other comments? Thank you for the discussion. Moving on to ordinance number 20-0-050.
An ordinance to revise the codified ordinances of the City of Mener 2006 as amended by adopting current replacement pages and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, Counsel, this is part of the somewhat regular harmonization of our code of ordinances with revisions to do higher revised codes. So these pertain to primarily license plate, display of license plates. As you're all probably aware, we're going to have one less plate that you'll need to display here in Ohio moving forward. So I'd encourage adoption of this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to approve?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Kirchner?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Approve, move to approve?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-050 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-051.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak, members of council. This ordinance firstly authorizes the permanent transfer of $1.5 million of cash from the city's general fund into the medical self-insurance fund to keep that fund positive. And it also incorporates the authorization of two appropriation revision increases, both to non-general fund, funds that exist, senior levy fund for $3,000 of additional hot meals that are served there, and a $6,000 appropriation to the rice detention fund to finalize the engineering on that project. I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Who to suspend? Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
To approve?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-051 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-052.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision and dedication plat of the Cardinal Meadow subdivision at 7640 Lake Shore Boulevard and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to develop just over eight acres from the former Dale R. Rice Elementary School property on Lake Shore Boulevard for a single-family RVG development now named Cardinal Meadow. The plan proposes 20 housing units along a 628.54-foot cul-de-sac. Following the Planning Commission's affirmative recommendation in November of 2019, the proposed rezone and the preliminary plan were approved by council on January 7th of this year. The final subdivision plat was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their May 7th, 2020 meeting. The commission recommended approval of the Cardinal Meadow final subdivision plat by a vote of 7-0 with the conditions outlined at the end of the staff report. Additional recommendations to the conditions have been included with the proposed ordinance under Exhibit 1.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Who to suspend? Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Who to approve?
Second.
It's been brought to my attention that we need to amend this ordinance.
May I clarify, Mr. President?
Please, Law Director.
Just so the council is clear, what you'll see in Exhibit Number 1 were the conditions that were proffered by the Planning Commission. If council is in agreement with the recommended further amendments to that, I think that the record should, should reflect that Exhibit Number 1 is being approved as amended. So a motion to amend Exhibit Number 1 as, as introduced would be appropriate. There's also architectural standards was, 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 was left open. As it stands now, there are no architectural standards. So to the extent there's a motion to approve as amended, just, just so council is aware, that will, that will remain blank. There will not be any architectural standards relative to this specific project. I'm not saying there should be, I'm just saying that that's the effect of moving forward as amended as Exhibit Number 1 without further changes to Exhibit Number 1.
Mr. Krieger? Thank you for that reminder. As the ward councilman, I would like to move to amend the ordinance for Exhibit 1 as introduced. I would also like to adopt the architectural standard of soffits and overhangs as a condition of approval.
Second.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marn?
I would like to take that in greater detail.
Please elaborate.
With our development off of the cross street from the mall off of 84, with the outside brick and things of that nature. We know that we've been duped in the past, Mr. Blake could attest to that. I just don't want to see that to happen again.
Mr. President, I'll add into that, if that's possible at this point. I don't see why we wouldn't do that. You know, we could talk about the pavilion, the fireplace, the percentage of brick, front porches, patios, soffits and overhangs, which you mentioned, and fencing material. I don't know if Mrs. Mitchell would want to weigh in on that if this is the time. I know we talked about it last week. But from there.
But to the fencing material, I recall in the staff report, I think that was left between the developer and the residents to agree to remove the fence or replace the fence as necessary because of existing fences from the school. Is that correct, a question to the administration?
That is correct. I know there's been some recent discussions between the, some of the residents and the developer. I, I think the developer might be here, I don't know if he wants to comment on it, but I, and I know there's been, we've received a couple of calls this week with regard to the fact that the fence would be, the existing fencing would be removed and the type of material, which as noted in Item 13, was to be left between the two parties and not something that we would specify.
But to your point, Mr. Donovan, the brick. To Mr. Marn's point, you were going to elaborate on the brick. Was it required fronts, sides?
It was a percentage we put into the 25%, yeah.
Okay.
Front for some?
Whatever matches farm, whatever, whatever. Yes.
So I believe I have an amendment proposed and seconded, but we're talking about adding to that with the brick? 25%?
Can I ask the developer on?
Excuse me, you'd be looking for Mr. Summers. He is online.
Mr. Summers, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
As far as the fence goes, I'm a little, I, I just seem a little surprised. Can you go over that again with me? We mentioned here that the, the landowners are going to be, the people who are already existing there are responsible for that fence?
So I worked out all the details with the neighbors to deed the property over, trim the trees, remove the fencing, and we are paying a portion of it and they're paying a portion of it. And we're planning on like a six-foot white maintenance-free vinyl fence is what we're planning.
Okay. And the, and the fireplace and all that, that's in the, that's in the plan. So that, that's, we don't even have to condition that. That's already notified me that we don't even have to even talk about that because that's in the plan. So it has to be done, so.
Yes, it will be done. It won't be a fire pit, it'll be a fireplace.
And the percentage of brick, this, I don't know if this is the first time you heard of that. 25% brick or stone. Soffits and overhangs, I know you've heard of that.
Of course.
And the, and the, I wanted to mention the pavilion where the fireplace would go to. That's, is that in the plan too, Mrs. Mitchell?
Pavilion?
Yeah.
You could, you refer to the landscape plan, it should have been in your packet. There is a pavilion that's proposed and it says pavilion with fireplace.
Okay, thank you.
And this, so the, the stone, the 25% stone brick requirement, that, that was a condition of the Osborne Farm?
Yes.
That's, that's what you guys required? Or I'm fine with that. I'm good with that and the soffits and overhangs, no problem.
Okay. Do you know, just throw this out at you, do you know what the name of the street's going to be? I see that you can't name it Meadowview Lane. Did you rename the street?
I'm working on some alternatives right now and I'm, I'm going to be submitting. I'm just trying to make sure that they don't exist already.
Yeah, appreciate it. And thanks for all your cooperation. I know you did a lot of things for everyone in that, in that area and for council and for the planning and for Kathy Mitchell and.
Well, I, I appreciate that and I appreciate Kathy's time and the administration. We had to work through a few challenges here, but we were able to do it and I appreciate everybody's time and effort as well.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Mr. Law Director, can I amend my motion to add 25% brick to the front elevations of the plans?
Yes, and so the record's clear, maybe we'll, I think the motion then is going to be to move for approval as amended via the changes to Exhibit Number 1, which were submitted. And then condition number 14 specifically, agreed as follows. Buildings shall have soffits and overhangs and 25% of the front elevations shall be finished in either stone or brick material.
President? We don't need anything about the fence in there with the, with the.
I, I, I can't tell you what you need or don't. It sounds like the issue had been addressed to, if it's not addressed to council satisfaction, then certainly it's, it's something that you can address now.
I, I think the comment from the planning director stands and that that's being resolved with the residents on a case-by-case basis. Whether they want to pitch in that, that funding is between them and the, and the new landowner, which is the developer. It's my input. Okay, we have a motion and, okay. Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Question for, did you say you're approving this as amended? Or are we amending and then going to suspension?
We did suspension previously.
I wasn't sure where we were at. Okay, so we, this is amended and we're approving as amended, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Just, just one more comment. You know, these amenities, this is another issue I've got with RVG is that I, I think amenities are really nice. We're putting in a pavilion and a, but there's 20 people that haven't bought a lot yet that are going to pay for that. This, this is going to be passed along to the homeowners association. And I guess one of my issues going forward or in the past has been maybe it's better to leave that common property as common property and let the people that buy the property and become part of the homeowners decide what they want. But it's a nice amenity, you know, I'm just saying, it was proposed in other sections. At Go Hill, there was a proposal for one and, and it, it fell in disfavor, you know. So again, I just have concern about putting something in before people have a, the people that buy the homes and pay for it have, have the ability to decide what they want. Yeah.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-052 has been approved.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marn?
Before moving forward, I think that'd be, this would be a good point. I know I'm speaking out of turn, but just comparing the two RVG developments and echoing Mr. Kirchner's and our, and myself's comments, I also agree with Ray 100% about the pavilion. Ray has stole my thunder twice tonight so far. But the last thing I, I'd like the administration to take a look at is our policy on whether or not we interconnect these proposed developments. You know, for example, you know, supposedly cul-de-sacs can't be longer than 600 feet. And this particular development was like the neighborhood didn't want us to connect to Brooks Boulevard. Well, what is it? What is exactly, do we, when do we connect, when do we not connect? Winchester, what is it, a couple of years ago out in Matt's Ward, didn't want to connect it. So we came up with that development plan where it's basically a horseshoe. So what is it in black and white so we know when do we connect these things, when don't we connect these things? Because in a lot of cases like this on Brooks Boulevard, that lot's been there for 40 years or however long it, Brooks Boulevard was built. I think it goes back to the early 70s. So I'd like the administration to come up with a plan and at least something that we could go by and Planning Commission go by. We know we interconnect and we know we don't interconnect. So this is no longer a problem either like RVG. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I can comment on a couple of things. The school was built in 1958. The Planning Commission process, the administration consistently recommended connector Street where the buses had always gone out to Brooks on Rice, I believe it's called. And it was Planning Commission that overruled that in favor of the developers' third or, I think it was his third layout. And that was how we got to a cul-de-sac. So I think the administration was consistent that they wanted a connector because it was feasible to do one. Any comments from the administration?
Mr. President?
Mr. Philippiak?
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think you summed it up rather well. I mean, the administration's position has, and in the past, and will remain in the future, the same, which is we wish to promote connectivity wherever we can. So, you know, our first priority is public safety. I think many of our planning documents in our code sections also promote connectivity of neighborhoods whenever possible. We certainly understand that these things ultimately end up being negotiations and character. character of these new neighborhoods and the character of existing neighborhoods is sometimes altered when that connectivity takes place. Would certainly leave that up to the wisdom of council to make those determinants in each case. But our position will probably not change. But I know council, there are other considerations when making these decisions.
Thank you.
Mr. President? I'd always like, I'd also like to look into the 600-foot cul-de-sac a little more and see if that, what, what the real issue behind longer, I know safety, you know, I understand that it was the fire hose length. If I'm wrong, correct me, but I, I think that's something we need to look into also, the 600-foot or, you know, going longer. It just seems to block a lot of developments to do a certain design to the property. And if we could look at that and maybe come up with a, maybe a little higher number, 700, I don't know. We'll have to talk to the fire chief and the police chief. Get there, I'm sure they're going to want to say 600, but it's sort of blocked a lot of different neighborhoods and a lot of different styles and with the way we could turn the streets and, and things like that. Appreciate it.
Very well. Ordinance number 20-0-053.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. for a three-year licensing agreement and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. This is a, an annual agreement that we have signed. ESRI is the acronym used for this agreement. And this essentially is the basis for our police-fire-engineering, building and zoning software that we utilize each and every day. This is a three-year agreement at a modest increase over that three-year period and ask for your approval.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landing?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-053 has been approved. Ordinance number 20-0-054.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Snyder Recreation, Inc. for the purchase and installation of all-inclusive playground equipment at Civic Center Park under the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. And you can see by your maps the location here at Civic Center Park Municipal Complex, who will be placing this equipment. Very excited to have this be the city first fully accessible. 100% of this equipment will be handicap accessible. The total contract cost is $140,000. $99,000 of that is to be provided through a grant, the Nature Works Grant, and we ask for your approval.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landing?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
To approve. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-0-054 has been approved. Resolution number 20-R-114.
Resolution adopting a policy for the use of the city's dishonesty and faithful performance insurance policy in lieu of surety bonding for all officers, employees, and appointees that are otherwise required by law to post an individual surety bond and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. This comes at the recommendation of the state auditor's office. Mr. Malinowski, please explain, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council, this resolution simply memorializes what has been the historic practice of the city and that is to secure through our liability insurance policy at a more favorable rate what would be in effect bonding on our public officials and employees here at the city. So I would recommend approval of the resolution. It puts us in compliance with the state audit. Thank you very much.
Counsel?
Move to suspend. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landing?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landing?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-114 has been adopted. Resolution number 20-R-115.
A resolution affirming the restricted expenditures of funds obtained from the Lake County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund in accordance with requirements of the CARES Act and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. And the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, otherwise known as the CARES Act, which was adopted by the U.S. Congress back in March, has provided a great deal of assistance to the private sector as well as the public sector. In the case of the state of Ohio, funds were distributed and have yet to be released to the local jurisdictions, counties, cities, et cetera. So recently, the state of Ohio adopted legislation which began as Senate Bill Number 310 and has since been morphed into House Bill 481. And I will ask for a slight amendment to the resolution momentarily. But essentially, what this resolution does is it, we, the city is agreeing to, to comply with all aspects of federal legislation as well as the state legislation. We're agreeing to spend any dollars or being reimbursed for any dollars that were used specifically for the purpose of meeting obligations related to meeting the pandemic crisis. So I would ask counsel first to amend this legislation to replace any reference to SB Number 310 with the reference HB 481.
Counsel, I need an amendment.
Move to amend Resolution Number 20-R-115 to replace Senate Bill 310 with HB 481. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
I think we have to suspend. You didn't have the motion to suspend.
That's next.
Okay, what?
First you amend, then you suspend as amended.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Landing?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you. Move to suspend as amended.
Please call the roll.
Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landing?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Move to approve as amended. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landing?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-115 has been adopted. Second reading, there are none. Third reading, there are none. Managers report. Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The Ohio Zone Lake County Virtual Career Fair takes place on June 22 through the 26. Please see the City of Mentor's website news tab for details, registration for that. The Home Energy Assistance Summer Crisis Program, otherwise known as HEEP, begins July 1 and runs through September 30. The Ohio Development Services Agency and the Lake County Council on Aging Help income-eligible Ohioans maintain their utility service through this program. And you can visit www.energyhelp ohio.gov for application and information on the program. Counsel is aware as well as the public that a water main break occurred early Monday morning in the westbound lane of Lakeshore Boulevard just east of Clear Air Drive. What happened was a 12-inch ductile iron line, water line burst around 4:30 a.m. causing a washout of the roadway. So this was not actually a sinkhole or a blowout, blowout of the roadway about 20 feet by 20 feet and seven feet deep. And repairs and temporary restoration were completed by 6:00 p.m. Monday evening. Final repairs and restoration have yet to be made after, and they will be made once a period of observation for, to make sure that we don't have some settling out there. I'm happy to say that both the concrete and asphalt contractors have substantially completed the city's neighborhood road repair program. They're in the midst of yard restoration, cleanup work, and continue that for a while as well as the city is working up a final punch list item for them as well. So we continue to try to find the balance between limiting public health risk and offering recreational activities for our residents to enjoy. Public playgrounds opened last week, as did the Civic Center Pool last Saturday. In addition to summer camps proceeding forward beginning in July, the Mentor Ice Arena will reopen on Saturday, August 1. Guidelines and available activities will be posted on the city's website over the next several weeks. I am disappointed to report that the city will not be proceeding with the fireworks display this July 4. There are no other Lake County communities proceeding fireworks displays and to the best of our knowledge, no fireworks displays in any community we are aware of in northeast Ohio. This leaves open the strong possibility that if we were to proceed, the normally large crowd could grow beyond what would be considered a responsible public health limit. But on a positive note, the city received approval just today from the Lake County General Health District for its plan to proceed forward with the Mentor Rock Series beginning June 30. So this will, this will run every Tuesday evening from 7 to 9 p.m. for the remainder of the original schedule, which runs through the last Tuesday in August of this. There will be protocols in place to promote the safest possible environment, including a limit on the number of attendees. And we will be putting details this week onto our website, including a couple of changes to the originally scheduled performers. One of our performers was coming out of Canada and they're not allowed to travel. So obviously we have a, we have, so we have a couple of spots to fill and that will be announced as well. And I just want to say that we really have throughout this pandemic appreciated the work that the General Health District has done. They've been fantastic to work with. I think they've been balanced as well in their outlook on trying to maintain public health but still present a reasonable standard. So we've appreciated that relationship. And finally, I'd like to announce some new businesses and, you know, in the midst of all the changes that we've been seeing, especially in our economy, it's refreshing to be able to make this type of, this part of our report. So with that, we're happy to announce that Dr. Ahmed Al-Sad has opened a new dental office at 7250 Center Street. R2 Pilates will be doing business at 9010 Tyler Boulevard. Angel Lisa's Bridle Boutique, it will be at 8607 Mentor Avenue. Reserve Hearing Center at 7533 Tyler Boulevard. And Fan for Life at 7850 Mentor Avenue. Again, in this challenging time, we greatly appreciate their investment and confidence in our community. That's all.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marne?
Mr. Philippiak, excellent job to the Economic Development Department, city administration, and Kevin Malicek on the excellent story that Channel 5 News did on our restart program. It's like, almost like that we, it was scripted and we developed it and could have done it better ourselves. Congratulations and I hope we use that to the best of our ability for economic development.
Clerk's correspondence. Julie?
Counsel is in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court, May 2020, month-end report. That is all.
Commission Committee reports, meeting minutes, Municipal Planning Commission, May 7, 2020. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, May 12, 2020. Tree Commission, May 13, 2020. Old business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
Yeah, thank you. I have a question for Ken, city manager. Ken, have we come to any conclusion what we're going to do with that large bungalow house at the front of Springbrook Gardens Park? It's always a mystery to me when I drive by and I see it and I wonder how that's going to fit in with the park. If, if any plans have been added around about the use, it's looking like it's coming up on a period where it's going to need some, some external maintenance. So I just wanted to bring that up and see where we're going with that part of the park.
Thank you, councilmen. It's a good question and I think we've had some discussion among members of council and the administration about the long-term future of that. That's a century home. It would be fantastic to be able to have that full view of Springbrook Park, but it's also a difficult decision to, to remove a perfectly fine home such as that. So there are options that we have that would include separating that and I think that probably is the most logical to proceed forward is dividing that property off and perhaps selling it off at some point in time. But I will tell you right now, we have actually invested a little bit in the interior of the building and placed it into a condition where it could be inhabited as a potential site for our first responders to be able to utilize in the event that they would need to be segregated from general population because of contraction of the coronavirus. So we've utilized that and a couple of other properties that we've worked with through urgent management agency to have that as a fallback in case we needed to have a, a sort of isolated environment, home environment for some of our, our people to recover. Fortunately, that has not been needed up to this point, but that is available right now for that reason. And, and one reason why we haven't made any strong commitment one way or the other toward its permanent future. So we look forward to having discussions with the city council on the ultimate.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Donovan?
Ken, would you have an update on the Urban Steakhouse property with the back hall that's been sitting there? It's going to be a tighter place. Would you have any new information on when they're coming?
Well, Mr. Malicek, you're still on the line. Would, do you have any information that you can share that, off the top of your head?
I don't. It's something that we can look into, obviously, and Kathy and I can reach out to the people that are on. Obviously, they were moving a lot of dirt around before, but it could be obviously because of the economic situation that we find ourselves in right now, it may have stalled. But I don't have any current information. I'd be happy to look into it.
We can get you an update on that.
Thank you.
Any other old business? New business?
Mr. President?
Mr. Krieger?
I understand, I don't have all the details, but I understand that our local coach, Tru Visano, has taken a coaching position in a college outside of Columbus, I think in Halyar. I don't have all the details. I want to say congratulations for that.
Yeah.
You moved to the college ranks, you say?
Sounds like it.
Excellent. Any other new business? Hearing none. Persons before council, there are none. Counsel, do we have a motion and a second to adjourn? Counsel, do we have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
This meeting is adjourned.